Okay, we're going to get started and take attendance for the public hearing before we open it up to the public.
Councilmember Hogan?
Here.
Councilmember Newton?
Here.
Councilmember Van Castle?
Here.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Supervisor Koozine?
Here. And the purpose of this public hearing this evening, the first one, we actually have two. First one was scheduled for 6:30 this evening is to take public comment on the Monroe Emergency Squad contract for the 2021 fiscal year. I'll just highlight key components of the contract and then we'll turn it over to public comment. This contract is a $245,155 contract for the 2021 year. As is customary, the town pays out half of the amount budgeted, which is paid on the 31st day of January 2021, represents, as I said, 50% of the total compensation the town budgeted for. That first payment is $122,577.50. And then there's that's followed by two equal payments, each 25% remaining, or 25% of total amount for the year. And that figure is $61,288.75. That second payment takes place on the 15th day of May. And then the third equal payment takes place on the 15th day of September 2021. And so that is the only language that has changed in the contract, dollar amount, to 2% increase from last year's contract. And so at this time, because we're operating this public hearing via Zoom, if you want to make a public comment, please raise your hand. If you are on a smartphone or a computer with a microphone, please click on the button that says Raise Hand on the control bar of the Zoom window. And if you're listening by telephone, please dial *9 to raise your hand. And we will allow participation in the order that is received here from the road. So at this time, the public hearing is open on the Monroe Emergency Squad contract 2021. Again, if I'm just tuning in, this is the public hearing on the Monroe Emergency Squad's contract proposed for 2021. All right. Well, we do have another public hearing scheduled for 6:35, so we'll give the public another minute to weigh in on the Monroe Emergency Squad contract before we close. All those comments are going to be raised. Okay, Steve Ben Gallo is here. Okay, Steve. Steve's the president of Monroe Emergency Squad. And so go ahead, Steve.
Can you hear me all right?
Yep, loud and clear.
I just wanted to thank the town board for everything they've done for us with giving us a 2%. And we just look forward to 2021 and hopefully moving forward with our building expansion. So again, thank you. And I want to thank everybody in the community for their support. And that's it. Thanks so much.
Great. Thank you very much, Steve. And I also want to point out that this language in the contract, as we have done in years past, that earmarks an additional $15,000 for the proposed capital expansion of the squad's new building. The verbiage is very specific and specifically states that the town will retain custody of that $15,000 until such time as construction of the new building has been completed and released upon to occur only upon receipt approval by a town voucher in accordance with the town procurement policies. So we'd love to be able to do more. Unfortunately, we have to balance what we can do financially with the needs of the town. And you know, it's it goes a little way if you get the project underway this year. I know you have some challenges out there, but it shows the town's commitment to what you're trying to accomplish. So appreciate the comments.
Thank you.
All right. Since we have no one, no other member in the public that would like to comment, we will, without objection, close the public hearing. All in favor? Close. The public hearing is closed. Thank you. And the next public hearing this evening, before we open it up, is for the Southland Falls Fire Company Incorporated annual contract with the town in Monroe for fiscal year 2021. This contract is similarly structured to what we've done historically with the Emergency Squad and another community center here in town. And the amount of the contract is for $546,000, I'm sorry, $546,629. And it's a 2% increase, which is what the fire company had asked for. And we very much, on behalf of the board, appreciated the fire company working with us, especially during this basically trying year as a result of COVID pandemic. And we have verbiage in the contract. And again, earmarks $50,000 of that amount for the dedicated and reserved for the purchase of a new fire truck. As we all know, they're extremely expensive, you know, upwards of a couple million dollars. And I think I probably haven't outfitted. This ensures that there's a set aside as we move toward that need down the road. We also, several years back, as a result of the state mandate municipalities, we were, fire companies have to provide enhanced cancer disability benefit insurance. We included language in the contract when that came out. It actually came out after the contract was in place, which, you know, was an undue burden on the part of the fire company. But the town board at the time agreed to cover up to 80% of that cost. And so there's also language in the contract that the town will provide for up to $3,000, which works out to an agreed upon figure of $137 per eligible firefighter to help them cover that insurance. Similar to the MS contract, there is a first payment, 50% of the contract price of $273,314.50, which will be payable on the 31st day of January. And then two additional payments each quarter of the agreed upon annual sum. First being on the 15th day of May, which would be $136,657.25. And then the same amount, again, on the 15th day of September, which is $136,657,026, $136,657.25. And I had had conversations with the president of the fire company. I do know they have some concerns about the payment schedule. I suspect we may hear about that during the public hearing portion. So for the public's benefit, if you'd like to make a public comment on the Southland Falls Fire Company's proposed budget, please raise your hand. If you are on a smartphone or a computer with a microphone, please click the Raise Hand button on the control bar of the Zoom window. If you are listening by phone, please dial *9 to raise your hand. And again, we will allow public comment in the order that we receive those requests. So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing to public comment. Greg, any who would like to comment? And so we have Greg Fenny, who is president of the fire company. Go ahead, Greg.
Evening, gentlemen. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Great. I wanted to thank everybody for working with us. Yes, my board did bring up concerns regarding the change of payment scheduling for this year. I have already spoken to the town supervisor regarding to this via email. It may have a financial impact on the firehouse. We're working through that currently. We would like to request a change to the contract. If it is not possible, we would just like the appreciation of, at least considering it, as we have done in years past, to a single lump sum payment. If that is not possible, we understand, and we will work with what we have gotten. And we thank you very much for helping us out through these tough times and hope to keep working with you guys in the future and making things possible.
So Greg, first of all, congratulations to your election as president. And I look forward to working with you through this year and beyond. The, I don't know if you were involved in the discussions that we had over the past several years during a bunch of time when we had a bunch of workshops. And we actually had conversations about this particular issue. And I know the board was accommodating in the past two years, mainly the first year because it was short notice of what the board intended to do. And we wanted to work with the fire company. We continue to want to work with the company. And the challenge for us is that the sales tax revenues that we collect monthly do not, will not cover your contract for the end of this month. So from a financial accounting standpoint, it's highly frowned upon by the controller's office to front money, basically it becoming out of fund balance, to make these payments when we're funding it through sales tax. So do you have, or would you be willing to provide a detailed listing of all those key payments to the board so they can, you know, consider your request?
I will speak to my board and my treasurer and see what we can come up with. What my main concern is, is the financial stability of the firehouse, obviously, and making sure that we can perform our efforts for the town as we are contracted to do so. I will speak to my treasurer directly and see if we can make that happen for you. I know I was, it was brought to my attention recently from my previous board members that have a little bit more time in the company. I have only been in this company for just under three years now. But I have 20 years of service in fire services. So I'm relatively familiar with the area and the fire department. But I'm still working with them to make sure I'm making the correct decisions for our membership in our community. I will definitely try to get you that information. If you could provide me with a point of contact, I will gladly get that for you and get that in the next.
Yeah, just if you, if you would like, just email to either Lisa or myself. It's all going to the same place. And I'll get that out to the board members. I mean, obviously, we want to work with the fire company. We have what I think is a great relationship. We want to continue to have that. But we need to modify how we, how we structure our payments. You know, that's in fairness to how we operate with other entities, you know, with other entities in the community. And primarily, you know, we don't want to run afoul of the controller. As you know, we are subject to periodic audits and things like that is what they look for. And we want to make sure we're doing it above board. We also, you know, we don't want to do anything that negatively impacts the fire company. So if you can get that information to me, I'll get it to the board. You know, maybe we can look at restructuring those dollar amounts a little bit, at least meet your immediate needs. And I'll bring it to the board. But I will tell you that, and I did in the email already, that any changes to the proposed contract as it is, is going to require another public hearing, which, you know, prevents you from, the company, from receiving any payment from the town. So, you know, I don't know if that is going to be problematic for you. Our next board meeting is the second Tuesday in February. I don't know what that date is, the 9th of February. So that would already put you, you know, a little bit further away from getting any check from the town, you know, whereas at least with this one, with this contract, you're getting a check by January 31st.
Oh, I, yes, I understand. I'm, I'm, I just want to make sure that I'm properly conveying the thoughts of the entire board and membership on behalf.
Okay.
So I'll bring that information to them and discuss the concerns with them and try to get that information to you as soon as I can.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anything else, Greg?
No, I just, I appreciate everyone. I'm, I'm actually the acting president right now. I'm still a vice president until such time we hold our elections again. But I thank everybody for working with me and I look forward to working with you all in the very near future.
Okay, likewise. Thank you. Thank you. Next on the call for public comment, we have Wayne. Go ahead, Wayne, if you can hear us.
Good evening, gentlemen, and I think lady. Can you hear me all?
Yes.
Okay, I'll try to speak up a little bit because I am on a phone. As you know, Todd, my only concern with this is, is we discussed this three years ago. When I was president of the company, I brought all that information to you and I thought we were past this. The structure of our payments, on how we do things, and with state contract changing usually on April 1st, we do between 65 and 80% of our purchases in the first quarter of the year. And our big payments all go out in the first quarter of the year, which include our mortgage, our loans on our trucks, whatever other loans we have. We also do our maintenance in the first quarter of the year on the trucks, pump testing, ladder testing. So you can see, we burned through $400,000 of that $540,000 in the first quarter of the year. That is my only concern about that. And like I said, I know you and I met on this three years ago in your office. I brought you all the information. Nothing has changed since then. The only thing that has changed is we have dropped off one loan, but we picked up a new loan with purchasing two trucks two years ago. So I mean, I hope we can get past this and just to continue on with that lump sum payment at the beginning of the year so we don't have to do so much work as volunteers to get everything changed around because it's going to be a lot of work. And I appreciate your time.
Yeah, well, thank you very much for the comments. All right. Since we do not have anybody else in the queue from the public, we will take those comments under consideration. And, you know, I will be the point person on behalf of the board to keep those conversations going, hopefully wrap this up as soon as possible. So with that, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So, second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Close. Okay, so the public hearing is closed. And again, everybody who participated in public hearings, appreciate their time this evening. Thank you. All right. So we will open up the audit meeting this evening, which was scheduled for 6:45. We should be able to get back on track for regular town board meeting at 7:00 PM and ask for all calls.
Councilmember Hogan?
Here.
Councilmember Newton?
Here.
Councilmember Van Castle?
Here.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Supervisor Koozine?
Here.
And I do have one item. I don't have the paperwork for the transfer station. I only have one about for discussion. I know John, Councilmember Hogan's been working on that. Yeah, so this is in relation to voucher.
He doesn't have a number. It's not entered yet.
Oh, okay. This is for a voucher from Emmens Metro LLC out of Manans. And this was for repairs, the transfer station pump in the amount of $1,093. This was on, we were billed on, I guess the work took place on December 14, 2020. There was a field service call that was in the amount of $894. Then there was an additional fee for OSHA required compliance based permit fee of $199, which gives you the total of $1,090. And just for background, this is the information that was provided to, from my office to the company. And I believe Drew Stevens is in point of contact at the company. And this is an email that was sent out from my office on behalf of Councilmember Hogan, essentially stating that on or around the 7th of April, I was notified by Ted Mansour, our transfer station supervisor, that a grinder pump was leaking. I couldn't identify what the problem was, so I reached out to Jesse Fisher, our water superintendent, and requested that he check out the pump to see what was wrong with it. Jesse looked at the pump and advised it was leaking at the flames. He informed me it was in a confined space and he could not repair it. We then notified you as the installer to come repair the leak. On December 14th, Emmens Metro LLC employed for onsite to repair the pump. I also responded and met with them to determine what they had done. They advised they tightened the flames a quarter turn on each of the bolts. They also suggested there may be some condensation in the pump to explain some of the liquid in the bottom of the pit and on top of the unit. They told me they tested the pump and it was no longer leaking. It was clear to me that the problem was the flames was, was the flames not properly tightened, allowing liquid to leak and accumulate in the pit and on the pump. Due to the obvious leak at the flames, I would have figured that would have been taken care of, but installer had no cause to town. Particularly, it was just installed on March 19, 2020, dictated by Councilmember Hogan. This was sent out on January 7th. To this date, we have not received any information back.
Sure. At the time, the invoice obviously came from Emmens Metro. They were doing shoot songs. And he asked me to email him some of the information that I had in regards to it. And then he will call me back and possibly serve a time. So the manager from Emmens Metro, that did not happen. It does not.
So my recommendation would be to hold off payments until we hear back. You know, that seemed kind of excessive to just a quarter turn and a couple of.
Particularly when it was just installed on March of this year.
Exactly. Exactly. All right. So we will, we will hold that voucher and then I'll look into it. Any vouchers need additional signatures?
No, we got them all.
So at this time, I've got a couple of transfers we need to go through. First one would be I entertain a motion to increase revenues by $15,000 to account TS 2130, which is a transfer station revenues daily fees. Second, any discussion? Favor? I have a motion to carry it to Manans, followed by seeking a motion to increase expenditures as follows. By $5,000 to TS 8160.1, which is a transfer station personal services. $9,000 to TS 8160.4, which is transfer station contractual. $500 to TS 9010.8, which is transfer station retirement system. $150 to TS 9000.8, transfer station Medicare. And $350 to TS 90308, transfer station social security, to pay for expenditures for the transfer station by recognizing increased revenue from daily operations of the facility during the 2021 fiscal year. So, Greg, any discussion? All in favor? All of the motions carried unanimously. Got a couple of resolutions. The transfer funds. First is, we're looking for a motion to, that $32 to be transferred to a 1010.4, which is general town board contractual. The same amount will be transferred from a 1990.4, which is general contingent purpose of this transfer is for payment of email services for the town board. So. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? All of the motions carried unanimously. Second motion is that $929.98 be transferred to account A 1420.4, which is general attorney fees. And the same amount will be transferred from account A 1990.4, which is general contingent and the purpose is transfer funds for payment of legal services for December 2020. So. Second, any discussion? All in favor? All of the motions carried unanimously. And then the final resolution, or motion I'm seeking is $2,000 we transfer to account A 4010.4, which is general public health contractual. And the same amount will be transferred from a 1990.4, which is general contingent. And this is for payment to the public health officer for 2020. So, second, any discussion? All in favor? All of the motions carried unanimously. Anything else, Jeffrey? Yeah, that's for our final motion to pay the bills. Second, all in favor? All of the motions carried unanimously. The motion to close the bottom.
Motion to close the audit.
Second, all in favor?
All.
Motion carries.
Okay, someone else stand with a bunch of agents?
Yes. Unless you need a break. All right, well, let me. All right. So at this time, likely open the regular town board meeting for December 20, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, that's not the right... January 26th. January 26th, 2021. And ask the clerk to call.
Councilmember Hogan.
Here.
Councilmember Noonan.
Here.
Councilmember Van Tassel.
Here.
Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Supervisor Kuzner.
Here. And ask everyone, please rise for questions.
...............
Thank you, everyone. Item one on the agenda is customary approval of minutes. We have two sets. First is January 12, 2021, which was a public hearing, which was required for the eminent domain procedure for sewer district one, extension five.
I believe we're still looking at an incorrect agenda because it's January 4th, not 12th.
So, what, so I feel that we just started. Yeah, we just read one minute at the top. So these are the wrong set of things I have?
You said public hearing was January 12th.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was January 4th.
Yeah, but what I'm holding in my hands, I have January 4th, January 12th. So, I'm not sure.
That's correct, January 4th.
Oh, it should say January.
Yes.
All right, accurate. All right. Back on the same page. So the first is January 4, 2021, which was a public hearing on the eminent domain procedure for sewer district one, extension five. Motion to approve. Second, all in favor?
I oppose.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. And then the second set of minutes that I have, January 12, 2021, which was a regular town board meeting. And... Motion to approve. Second? I was taking. All in favor?
All right.
Yes. Opposed? And Councilmember Van Tassel has an extension. Let's skip over future meetings, workshops. We do have resolutions establishing since public hearings need to set up a little bit further down the agenda, so. We rely on three agendas, a COVID-19 update. As of 11:00 a.m. today, in New York State, we have received one, just over 1.3 million doses of the vaccine. And the amount that have received, over 1.2 million have been administered, which is approximately 93% of that allotment. And delivery of the week seven allocation from the federal government, unfortunately, will not begin arriving until the middle of this week. So vaccination efforts are kind of starting to scale back because the vaccine is not available, readily available. We're hopeful that that's going to turn around with some of the new, some of the other companies coming online that are seeking approval from the FDA. But, you know, we are at a predicament because obviously the most vulnerable population are the ones that are dying in general terms. And we can't get that vaccine out fast enough to protect them. You know, New York does have a vast distribution network. However, we also have a very large population of eligible individuals that far outsee, outpaces the number of vaccines that we have available coming from the federal government. And also, while the federal government has increased eligibility for the vaccines, an additional 7 million New Yorkers, the federal supply of vaccines has actually decreased. As I indicated, we received just over 1.3 million doses in New York. 1.2 million of them have already been administered. The number of individuals that have received a second dose is now totally 166,640 here in Saratoga County. Today, total cases confirmed is currently at 10,109. We've had 180 deaths countywide, and there's currently 4,291 active cases. Number of cases recovered is 5,710. And presently, there's 94 individuals that are hospitalized from Saratoga County. A little closer to home, the town of Moreau, there have been 428 confirmed cases. Unfortunately, there have been nine deaths, and there are presently 205 active cases, which extrapolates to 214 individuals that have recovered. In the village, total number of confirmed cases today is 115. Fortunately, there's been zero deaths, and there are presently 41 active cases with number of recovered individuals presently at 74. The bright light in these statistics is that if you look at the seven-day rolling testing positivity rate, it has dropped from two weeks ago, which was just over 10.2%, down to 6.3%. And, you know, I think what we're seeing is what the health experts had predicted, that after we went through the holidays, Thanksgiving, and Christmas, and New Year's, you're going to see a peak. And I think now that's beginning to subside a little bit. So, so that's good news. Number of new cases in the last seven days has also dropped dramatically. Two weeks ago, we're looking at just over 1,400 new cases. And during the past seven days, that number has dropped to 833 new cases. But however, in the last 24 hours, it's been 89 new cases. So, you know, the numbers are beginning to trend in the direction we want them to go, but we've got a long ways to go. And the only way we're really going to get those numbers down is if we get access to the vaccine. The good news is Saratoga County, this is according to New York State DOH, Saratoga County is one of the leading counties statewide in getting their residents vaccinated. As of today, we've had 18,116 individuals that have received at least one dose. And that's, that's just over 8% of the county's population. And the number of individuals that have received a second dose is over 3,083. So Saratoga County is doing a great job of getting the vaccine in the arms of its residents when we have it. And we're doing all we can to increase those numbers. I did receive a notice today, and I'm sure anybody who's a patient that Hudson Headwaters also did. I just wanted to point it out as a point of information. Hudson Headwaters was notified by New York State that they will not receive additional vaccines this week. And as a result, they will not be scheduling any new first dose vaccination clinics for the period of 1/25, which is yesterday, through January 29. And they'll still continue to have most updated information on their website. And although this is not the news that we had hoped for, I just want to point out again that you can still register online so when the vaccine becomes available. And you can do that by going on the website, the state's website, AMI Multiple. And you can also call the New York State Vaccination Hotline at 1-833-697-4829. Again, the number is 833-697-4829. And at least you can get up into the queue. So that's where we are right now. Fingers crossed that we'll see greater allowance from the federal government pretty soon. Item four on the agenda, and I believe Don Rhodes is with us.
Yeah, if you could make my panelists, that'd be great.
All right, can you hear me? I think my video is disabled, but is the audio up?
Oh, we can hear you loud and clear down.
Excellent.
Yeah, so we have Don Rhodes, who is the lead engineer for the town on our sewer project. And we have been working, as I've indicated in many other board meetings, to do all we can to drop the cost of the sewer project for those that would be paying for the cost within the boundaries of the sewer district. And one of the things that entails is going after any grant that we can. And so we have access to a community development block grant for not only 2021, but also for 2020, which I think the maximum you could get is just over a million dollars. We're hopeful that we can get, you know, close to there. But, you know, it's all predicated on, I guess, how we're scored, direct down.
Yeah, what you're scored and how much the project will cost that you can apply for. So that will, the project that you undertake will basically establish the maximum amount you can get up to 1.25 million.
Okay. And just before, we have Carla. She, she able to? Yeah, she can just... Carla, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I'm good.
All right, great. So a couple of items we need to address, housekeeping items in order to go after that funding. And the first one is the town board has to adopt a resolution which authorizes the supervisors to apply for and receive funding under that program here, 2020 and 2021. We have two separate resolutions that would accomplish that. I believe the clerk has a copy of those. Would you like to read one of them into record?
I'll read the 2021 first. Town of Moreau Resolution authorizing supervisor to apply for and receive funding under the program here, 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program. Whereas the U.S. Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, BL 98383, as amended, provides for the development of viable urban communities by providing decent housing in a suitable living environment and expanding economic opportunities, principally for persons of low and moderate income. And whereas, said act notarizes the Secretary of Housing and Urban Development through New York State Office of Community Renewal to make grants to units of general local government to help finance community development programs under Section 158.1 of Title III. And whereas, under said legislation, eligible applicants in the case of municipalities are required to authorize an official representative to file the application and to provide a secretary with certain assurance of compliance with applicable laws and regulations under Title I of said act. And whereas, if it is desirable to conduct and hold a public hearing pursuant to the HUG Act to obtain the views of the citizens on community development needs to establish priorities and subsequently develop the application programs and any amendments or revisions thereto. And now therefore be it resolved by the members of the town board that the town clerk is hereby authorized to publish a notice of public hearing to be held on February 9, 2021, at 6:45 P.M. at the town offices to provide an opportunity for the town to, A, provide citizens of the town with adequate information concerning the amount of funds available for proposed community development activities, the range of activities that may be undertaken, and other important program requirements. Be it for the citizens adequate opportunity to participate in the development of the application, any revisions, changes, or amendments to the application prior to the submittal. Be it further resolved that due to public health and safety concerns and in accordance with the Governor's executive order 202L extensions and continuations, the public will not be permitted to attend at the remote locations where board members or department heads or staff will be situated or in any other location. The public will be able to fully observe the video conference meeting and will be able to comment during the public hearing. The video conference is available as follows. HTTPS backslash backslash US02web dot zoom dot US backslash backslash eight one one seven nine oh five seven five six oh. To dial in, please call 1-992-056099 with meeting code eight one one seven nine oh five seven five six oh. The link will also be on the town's website at www.townofmoreau.org. And be it further resolved that the supervisor is hereby authorized to execute and file an application on behalf of the Town of Moreau with the New York State Office of Homes and Community Renewal for a Community Development Block Grant pursuant to Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended. And be it further resolved that the supervisor is hereby authorized and designated as the representative to act as such in connection with the application to provide additional information as may be required, including all understandings and assurances contained in the application. Be it further resolved that the supervisor is hereby authorized and directed to execute any contract and your agreement with the New York State Office of Homes and Community Renewal in connection with the application, and his designee is further authorized to request and expend funds from the U.S. Government pursuant to said contract and/or agreement. Be it further resolved that the extent of all or any actions hereby authorized to have been executed and performed by the supervisor are, are hereby ratified and confirmed in this resolution take effect immediately.
Thank you, Leon. Someone like to move that resolution? So special. Second, any discussion? All in favor? Yes, files. Motion carries unanimously. Carla, are you online?
I am.
So can I ask the clerk instead of reading for the next, for the 2020 year, just to point out the year and the hearing date and time so that we don't have to read it all again? Or?
Absolutely. No, absolutely. The resolution is identical to the 2020, but for the date and time of the hearing. The, even the Zoom information is the same.
Okay. Does that work for you, Leon?
It does.
You're welcome.
So just a nutshell, you want to read out the...
So the meeting time for the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program will be on February 9, 2021, at 6:55 P.M.
So, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I oppose.
Oppose the motion carries unanimously. So we're all set on the public hearings, right, Don?
Sounds good. I'm glad I didn't have to read all that.
So then, also under Community Development Block Grant, we need to move a resolution which would allow the supervisor to contract with CNG Municipal Consulting to prepare an updated income survey in the amount of $1,099 plus posted as being necessary for the CDVG grant application. Somebody like to move that. Motion to approve. Second, discussion?
What's, what is it?
So we have to...
Is that CNG?
Yes, yeah, CNG.
CNG?
CNG.
CNG?
Thanks. Duly noted. Any others? All in favor?
Yes.
I oppose. Motion carries unanimously. And the final item under the Sewer Act, and not necessarily to the block grant, is as we're going through the... the remain easements that are outstanding that we're trying to become an agreement just about there. National grid may require that an ecological study be performed on those particular parcels. And so Don is recommending that that we do a resolution which will provide for an addendum to the Burge Contract for an ecological study for endangered species to address national grid concerns. Do we have a dollar amount on that?
Yes, maybe that was 2,875, if I recall. And that is a direct pass through of our environmental subconsultant with no markup.
Oh, yes, right, I do have that, yeah. So I guess I'd be looking for a resolution that authorizes the supervisor to sign a Lovers Group contract addendum 2018107-01, totaling $2,875 for additional ecological study.
Motion to approve.
Second, any discussion?
No, actually, I want to go back to a GNG thing, no?
Okay, we'll go there. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, so we'll go back to this previous resolution.
The fee for GNG?
Yeah.
I have this $1,990 plus posted.
What did I say? You know what I said?
I wrote 1,890.
Okay, I was going to.
So are we good, Dan, for, at least for your needs for this evening?
Sure am, thank you so much.
All right, thanks for joining us, we appreciate it. Thank you, Don.
Pleasure, Dan.
Item five on the agenda is municipal pandemic plan. I talked about this previous board meeting and had asked the personnel committee to help us work on that. We're getting down to crunch time, so Jeffrey actually put together a draft. And we just need to fill in some blanks on that. First of all, thank the Jeffrey crew for doing that. And we're kind of under some time constraints because we need to get this to our union by February 4th for their review. So that's why we've got it before us this evening. Does everybody have a copy of that? So we need to answer the questions in the red, right? On that sheet, rather, in favor?
There are some comments on there that need to be addressed.
All right, so first of all, take us on the concept of operations. Means of notifications of plan, whether it be via email, website, and for that hard copy. Would you agree with that? Or would you prefer one over the other? What page? Four? Okay, okay.
Mr. Supervisor?
Yes?
Are you looking at the draft pandemic plan that I sent over that had all the information Jeffrey gave? Or are you looking at something else?
I have the Town of Monroe pandemic plan dated 1/19. And then I have the Public Employer Health Emergency Plan for the Town of Monroe, which I believe you prepared.
Right, Jeffrey had put together, we had prepared a checklist for the town and sent it over that had questions for everybody. Jeffrey had responded to the questions and sent it over to me last week. And then over the weekend, I put together the plans.
So this is what we need answers to?
This is what we need.
So this is what we got? This is what we're looking for?
Correct, yes. There's some, there's some comments in the sidebar that need to be discussed, as well as some definitions of some of the departments.
All right, so. So on page one, on the side, I see the comment, Carla, I believe it's yours. Please identify the labor unions of town. This would be the CSDA.
The Civil Service Employees Association.
Is it a particular local 1,000 or something like that? I don't know if you want to do these now, but?
Oh, do you need them before it goes to the unions?
Yeah, we need to, we need to have all this information. This has to be completely draft ready to go to the union.
Right, but we have to do it as a board, don't we?
You do not have to do it as a board, but you can. You have to review it as the board. If you want to take the time to do that now, we can do that. The way the process works is once, once the, once you are comfortable with the plan, it goes to the union, the union reviews it, it does not have the, and it can give recommendations, it does not have to approve it. It comes back to the board, the board can review the recommendations, and then the board has to adopt it by April 1st.
We can go through that, or the personnel committee can take it and give it back to you by end of next week?
No, 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 it has to be to the union next week, the 4th. We have to give it to the union on February 4th.
Well, we can, we can make that that night, correct, Carla?
Yeah.
That's Monday, isn't it?
I think that's Wednesday.
Monday, February 1st.
Okay.
Yeah, the 4th would be Thursday, so. Your conference supervisor? I'd be happy to, because there's only a few outstanding issues and a pretty innocuous, pretty common sense. I think Personnel Committee could knock that out and probably. You know, the document itself, I had a chance to go through it, and I'm okay with it as drafted. If I had any changes or recommendations, recommendations. I would just have go to Personnel Committee for the next day or two. We'll incorporate them, get it to the union or get it to Carla to clean it up, finalize it, and get it to the union for review and kind. How's that, Carla?
That will work. If we can get it to, if we can perhaps get information to me by the end of this week, I would just rather give it to the union sooner rather than later.
Right, okay, we'll do that. Moving on, item six is assessment services. Should be a proposal from Gar Associates similar to, I think, last year. If I'm not mistaken, the year before. It's an addendum, addendum to the original agreement for professional services between Town of Monroe and Gar Associates LLC. I'll just read from the proposal. It says it's been mutually agreed by both parties that Gar Associates LLC will provide additional support services to Town of Monroe in terms of the original agreement dated May 29, 2019, and modifies scope of services and include additional services as outlined in the attached proposal. Term of this addendum is for the period of January 2, 2021 through December 31, 2021. Both parties agree that at the end of this term, December 31, 2021, this agreement may renew for an additional time period as mutually agreed upon. Access to payment schedule for period of January 2 through December 31 of 2021. This addendum shall be effective upon signature of Town and Gar Associates LLC authorized officials and shall be enforced from the same period. And if you look at the payment schedules, it's essentially a monthly payment of each month beginning January 2 of $500, except for the month of December, and it would be $1,500. So the total cost of the agreement would be $95,000. And this would be, as we committed to doing with the assessor helping that office maintain equity in the roles. One of the challenges that we're starting to see, especially with a lot of real property transactions going on, not only around the county, but statewide, it's having, has a potential to negatively impact our equalization rate, which is vitally important that we keep that pretty close to 100% so we get, you know, all of our share of sales tax and all, and things like that. So this is, again, another annual contract with Gar Associates and to assess, to help our assessor do the things she's been doing in getting that role where it should be. Motion to approve and authorization to sign. So the motion would be to authorize the supervisor to sign the addendum to the agreement to the Town of Monroe and Gar Associates LLC for assessment support services for the period of January 2, 2021 through December 31, 2021 in an amount not to exceed $95,000. Motion to approve. Second, discussion? I'm just, just real curious, are we at this? I mean, we need this, so this does not mean having a problem with having to work with this. Do we foresee a spot in Town of Monroe where no longer workers in Gar? Or are we, do you think we're always going to be working with Gar all over?
Well, I think.
But then?
Are we going to continue to be dependent on Gar?
I don't think so. You know, it's not, it's not unheard of. If you look around municipalities around the county, you know, Town of Wilton, Waldo, they do have outside services to help their assessor. You know, because you're bringing in experts to have access to greater personnel to help with, like, for us, like, commercial quarter, we haven't had a lot of experience in our assessor's office with commercial valuations. They do, they work across the state, I recall when we interviewed them. They had a pretty extensive list, reputable. They also did, back when the town did a revow, I think it's been over 10 years ago, they did the revow, so they're familiar with our town properties. The level of, or the extent of work that they have to do, I think, decreases over time, if you will. You know, we do have some inequities in some parts of the town. I.e., if you looked at Route 9 and look what vacant properties assessed at versus what it was selling for, you know, there's some, and some balances that are out of whack. And, you know, they can, their knowledge can be helpful to the assessor and the assessor's office in kind of getting that back to where it should be.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And again, I'm not questioning it necessarily. I know that we have a sole assessor and a clerk. And I know if you look at, if you look at the towns and municipalities that are our size, like we are, they're offices that significantly more staffed. So I'm not at all questioning it. I just was curious, like, at what point maybe will we? And I guess, does he give an answer to that? Because everything he said makes sense. I just know that we've, we've worked with that quite a bit, you know, I mean, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, one of the other benefits to the town, too, is, you know, I don't think it'd be very popular to go through a revow. We know that it can be expensive, especially when, you know, a decade has elapsed since we did a revow. You know, I think that pays a big dividends to have, you know, this level of expertise working with our assessor to keep us where we need to be, making sure everybody's assessed fairly. So I think it's a win for the town. You know, and that keeps us happy to revow.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing them all in favor?
I guess.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item seven on the agenda is landfill closure monitoring contracts. This is the standard contract that we've had for years and years on monitoring our closed landfill. I think everybody has a copy of the contract agreement. The total of the agreement is for $9,969.75. So I'd be looking for a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign a contract with CT Mail Associates in an amount not to exceed $99.69.75. And that would be for the purpose of landfill monitoring services, where they look at groundwater, surface water, leak check monitoring, explosive gas monitoring, periodic landfill inspections and reports. And these, by the way, these are required to be done by the state of New York City. And in general, landfill repairs and oversight services. And I'm not going to read through all the different fees as outlined, but the subtotal is $84.34.75. And the subtotal with oversight services, again, is $99.69.75. Motion to approve. Second, any discussion? All in favor? Contract code, we can carry unanimously. Next item is occupational medicine contract. As we do every year, we have a contract with Occupational Medicine Services at the Center of the Hospital where they assist us in doing our mandatory DOT testing. And they have indicated that their fees are going to increase. Just read it briefly in a letter dated December 3, 2020. It says, "Dear value client, after careful consideration, we have determined it is necessary to increase our fees effective February 1, 2021. Although you will find that our prices remain competitive, we want to be sure to give you more than 60 days' notice of these changes. Our records indicate that your company's agreement for occupational medicine services is either outdated or due for renewal. Therefore, in close, please sign the agreement for occupational medicine services, which includes the 2021 Schedule, Schedule A, Dash, Available Services and Fees. After review and signature, this agreement will become effective February 1. Going forward, occupational medicine services will not be provided after January 31, 2021 unless we have signed agreement on file." Also enclosed, we ask you to take time to complete the client update information form, find experience survey. If you have any questions or need more information, please hesitate. Contact me sincerely, Terrance Whitaker, R&amp;B S, Associate Director of Occupational Medicine Services at Center of the Hospital. Everybody has a copy of the contract. It's similar to last year, just with the fee changes. And they are included in Schedule A. So, yeah, so the Schedule A is brief, I'll just read through it. No show, same day cancellation fee is $25. Injury care billed to workers' comp, not applicable. Flu vaccine is $27. COVID-19 PCR test is $1.45. Physician review and consultation with positive COVID-19 results, $3.50. DOT physical exam is $95. DOT urine drug screen, 5.5. Non-DOT drug screen, 5.5. And finally, random drug and alcohol test pool. January to December, the per 25 participants is $56. And again, we use this primarily for DOT required testing. That's a random test, and if there's an accident involving a town highway truck, I will have to be tested. So if we're going to?
Authorize the supervisor to sign that, I believe. Make a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign the agreement at Center of the Hospital, Occupational Medicine Services Agreement.
Any discussion?
I know the D O T physical is reasonable, I can say the 140, not, 195.
Really?
Oh, no, I haven't.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item eight is, I'm sorry, item nine is electronic office product contract. This is for the Toshiba, which is the general copier in my office, that's used by my office, others, town board members. And this is a renewal agreement, which is $16 per month. And because of the age on that machine, I think it's well worth it, an agreement in place. Any discussion? So this is authorizing the supervisor to sign an agreement, Electronic Office Products Incorporated. Or the maintenance agreement of the Toshiba copier. Any other discussion? All in favor?
I oppose.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 10 is highway department request. First one I have is for emergency repair of a 2012 National Tunnel Dump Truck. This was for $4,000, the vendor is H L Gage out of Albany, New York. And it would be paid through account DB 2130.405, which has a current balance of $34,542 as of January 1st, 2021. So, second. Any discussion?
This was the truck that was, was coming in accident?
I don't think so. I thought that was a new one. This is the, oh wait, wait, here it is. It was Wednesday, 2012. I thought there was a lot of them. Paul, are you online? We can make one call, so we can talk. The, the candy. Yes, candy. Yeah, there's a quick moment. Yeah, I mean, you saw Paul, you can talk. Can you hear us, Paul? If you unmute your mute button, we can hear you.
Okay, maybe.
Are you there, Paul?
I'm here, but.
Hey, Paul, so this, this is for the emergency repair on the truck that tipped over in that storm?
No, it's the one with the water pump went.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So.
We know, that's true. Regarding the update.
Oh, which is not okay.
We had to trailer it down.
So this is the separate truck. Any questions for Paul on?
Yes, so the 2012, what was it that happened with this?
The water pump went, and you needed special tools and everything to get in and change the water pump and the thermostats. You had to pull the whole front end off of it. We trailered it down on our truck.
Okay, that's down, that H L Gage, or we took it down there for that, okay.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. And next item for highway is request to contact Saratoga County for road striping 2021 budget. Highway superintendent's request of permission to contract with the county for approximately 2.5 miles of town roads to be painted. Pine at 3.34 miles, Suffolk Road at 0.65 miles, and Mott at 1.5 miles. He indicates that due to fluctuating cost of paint labor, they are unable to quote exact cost currently. But we did have a balance of $2,600. And is that in the 2020 one you mentioned, Paul, or 2020?
Yeah, let me just check them out.
I did. I wouldn't have thought they had more than one strike, maybe not. So anyway, the bottom line is.
Is it?
Second. Can you hear us, Paul?
Yes, I can. It's a 21 budget.
Yeah, so we only budgeted $2,600?
Yes, we did.
And so we go as far as $2,600 goes?
We're only doing those four roads, or three roads that we are paving this year.
Okay, so that $2,600 job will cover it in that short?
We're hoping it does. They gave me an estimate, they gave me an estimate, and I'm hoping that covers it.
Okay, so that's what comes from account 3310.499, which has a balance of $2,600. So, second. Any discussion? All favor?
I.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Anything else, Paul?
No, that was all.
Got you guys out tonight?
They're out right now.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Item 11, on the agenda is Department of Protection Grant Resolution. I have received requests from Saratoga Plan, which you may or may not be familiar with. They're an organization that are actively involved in preserving land for many different uses. And we request, we received a request from Saratoga Plan. Because they're working with the Barber Brothers Dairy, which is dairy farm that's located in town Northumberland. But they have recently purchased 77 acres of farmland here in the town of Monroe. And it's actually a tax parcel, 91 point dash 1 dash 52. And they would like to, like the town board's support via resolution. Applying for New York State Department of Agriculture Markets funding opportunity where. The development rights of that property will be purchased, which essentially provides that, that land in perpetuity. Will never be able to be developed, it could only be used for farming purposes. I think it's a great idea, you know, anything we can do to help, you know, preserve farmland, especially because it's located in the Ag District. I think it'd be a great idea to sign on to that resolution. We do have a draft resolution prepared. I think Board members have a copy, do you have a copy of that, Liam? If you'd like to read it, you want to read it?
Yes, Paul.
Go.
Town of Monroe Town Board Resolution Number, I'll continue that afterwards, states supporting the Barber Brothers Dairy. Three Farmland Protection Projects in Saratoga Plans, implication to New York State Department of Agriculture Markets for a Farmland Protection Implementation Grant. Whereas Barber Brothers Dairy LLC is the owner of certain real property consisting of approximately 77 acres of viable agricultural land within tax net parcel. 91 point dash 1 dash 52, located on Mott Road, Town of Monroe, Saratoga County, New York. And whereas the owner of the property wishes to protect it for agricultural purposes by conveying a permanent conservation easement. On the land in a purchase of development rights transaction. And whereas the Town of Monroe Farmland Protection Plan 2014 puts forth a recommendation. To facilitate farmland preservation through the establishment of farmland conservation easements. Or purchase or lease of development rights. Identify Saratoga Plan as a potential partner for such projects. And specifically identifies the property as a high priority for farmland conservation. And whereas the Farmland Protection Implementation Grants, F P I G Program, RFA 0219. Provides state financial assistance for local initiatives. That are intended to maintain the economic viability of the state's agricultural industry. And in supporting land base and to protect the environmental and landscape preservation values associated with agriculture. And such financial assistance will enable applicants to implement conservation easement projects with owners of viable agricultural farmland. Associated with dairy farm operation at risk of conversion to non-farm uses. And whereas Saratoga Plan is a New York not-for-profit conservation organization. Dedicated to preserving the rural character and natural habitats and scenic beauty of Saratoga County. Ancestral homelands of the Mohican, Mohawk, and Abakia people. So that these irreplaceable assets are accessible to all and survive for future generations. And whereas Saratoga Plan's Board of Directors has approved taking down the Barber Brothers Dairy Three Farmland Conservation Project. Including application for funding by New York State Department of Agriculture and Markets. To purchase the development rights of the property. Now therefore being resolved that the Town of Monroe Board, the regular town board meeting on January 26th, 2021. Voted to endorse the Barber Brothers Dairy Three Farmland Conservation Project and Saratoga Plan's application for funding. From New York State Department of Agriculture Markets to purchase the development rights of the property.
Thank you, Liam. Somebody like to move in for discussion? So, second. Any discussion?
Where is it? My, what was I, my?
Um, I think as you're headed east on the left, there's. We see a lot of those owners, like forest tents in, they kind of goes around like a building block. Things land behind them.
Up to the, basically north side of Long Island.
Yeah, north side, yeah, south side of this town.
Right, okay, so on the side, and I'm thinking, what's over there? What's the road that enters, there's an intersection.
Oh, June.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, it's south, I believe it's.
More east.
Yeah, past the tracks.
Yeah, okay. Cool.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. I just got a notice, I got taken emergency call from the county. I'll take over just for the many reports.
Okay, again, item number 13, many reports. Does anyone have any, you'd like to report out at this time?
J D, yeah, I got it.
Thanks.
The landfill, I talked with Ted about trying to keep the traffic in and out of the booth. The one person at a time, point things out, make sure there's plenty of lights there, sprays there. Try to, you know, just keep it down there, because you can't social distance in there. There's not six feet in there, so. I talked with Ted, he was going to say I have that. I stopped down the landfill, I think it was last, maybe it was Thursday. And one of the gentlemen working on it got my attention and showed me the stuff that goes up out of the mid border. And it was, and over there, it said, release. It was wobbly, it was a little tight on it, it was like a stair. I went over to talk to Paul, Paul got ready in that afternoon, and got it all taken care of, so.
Oh, great.
Yeah, yeah, he got that. Yeah, Paul, a great example. He was going to get it in tomorrow for service, he said, bar many unexpected stuff, so he was going to get it in for service tomorrow. He's got, staying on top of that. Well, so.
Nothing to report on, but I got it brought up last time, something we got to take a look at the water agreement with the village. Because we're going to come up on that again soon, so something we should be taking care of.
Councilman Noonan, I wanted to, I wanted to, to address that, actually, I looked into that after the last meeting. And the agreement has already expired, it was a six-month agreement, not a year agreement. So that's something we should probably look at sooner rather than later, if that's what the village wants to do.
Okay, six-month agreement, so, that's right, and I think, you know, now you say that, I do recall us having that discussion today. Let's start with six months, and if everything seems fine.
Six months, the six months ended in December.
Okay, so I'll reach out to the village trustee, we have a chat about this, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Hello? Anyone else on committees?
No.
Okay. So, I know the supervisor mentioned the executive session, do we? Is that something he has to call, and we wait for him, or is that something that I can, but I said too, we can have a discussion. Anyone else with supervisor items, can we give them a minute? Oh, sure, okay.
Someone needed to disclose to you. We're on pause. Please be patient.
If you want to, you could probably take a five-minute break. To allow the supervisor to return. The meeting would still be kept open, but you would basically be on pause.
I think that he's returned. What about that? Are we all done? Yeah, it's back to you.
Back to you, and it's.
I just got a few here. I have a thank you card that was addressed to me as town supervisor from Joy and Collins, 538 Suffolk Road. Says, dear Todd, I'm sending you this note of appreciation to be able to use Monroe Rec for safe walking year round. I am very impressed with the rec employees who keep the roads, parking lots, and sidewalks clear to snow and ice. And it is because of these employees that Monroe Rec is a safe place for bee to walk. Sincerely, Joy and Collins.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Nice to hear.
Yeah. And the last item I have is just a D O T update. Final update on the emergency bridge repairs requiring closure detour, the Route 4, Hudson River, Greenwich, Northumberland Bridge. From Steve Lockhold, I think that's how you say it. When New York State D O T says repairs, this bridge have been completed, and the bridge reopened the traffic as of 7:45 this morning and January 25th yesterday. Thanks for your patience during the closure detour period. So I have supervisor items, did you guys listen to committee reports?
We did. One of the things that came up, the municipal agreement, bar the village, actually was only six months in, in December. So we probably should get back on the phone with those guys and figure out what they want to do for next year.
Sure, so like to see if we were paying for a lot of these.
They pay.
Yes.
Okay. I can give a follow-up on that.
You have anything else in there, committee? If not, we do need a relatively brief executive session. For the purpose of contractor negotiations in relation to the town property. And also to discuss the matter in relation to the protection of public health and welfare. And my personal question. And the, to discuss the work performance of unnamed town employee. So, second, second. All favor?
I.
Opposed, motion carries, everyone in the executive session, and hopefully we're out pretty soon. Okay, I'd like to welcome everyone back. We, I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session, and let the record reflect that no action was taken in executive session. So.
Second.
All favor?
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. So we're back in open session. We do have one additional item to take up this evening, and that is adjusting the water superintendent's annual salary. And I think the motion will be presented by a councilwoman for the public, or.
I'm going to make a motion to adjust, or to provide Jesse Fish's salary to $66,392 annually.
Effective January 25th. Which is the first day of paper. Effective January 25th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Last item, I think was other business, anybody have any other business?
Oh, this is Carl, where do we have this all?
You hear that, Carl?
Same place, same place we were last time, that the, we have provided the solar law to the planning board members, the zoning board members, and NYSERDA. The planning board did not look at it at their meeting last night, their meeting last night was three hours long. So I don't think we wanted them to look at it then, but they have that, they will be looking at it. have that, they will be looking at it, and then it'll come back to you folks to set the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We skipped over setting future meetings, we talked about two items, was there anything else we're going to add to that? We've got the SOB 9 for the community grant, there's two of our.
Yeah, so those resolutions included the date of time.
It was already on.
Yeah, so that was that. And you've got those things in there. Anything else? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? I agree. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, appreciate your time, sorry about the long agenda, just lost one more. Thank you, Leanne, Jeffrey, thanks, Carl.
Good night, everyone, be safe, guys.